We've got two this evening, just so you know that when you come up, you'll get three minutes. It is not a discussion or debate. The board members will not be able to answer anything if there's a question directed. If you, it's an agenda item for later in the evening, feel free to stick around and we can answer the questions at that time that are presented at audience participation. So first up tonight will be Colette Lane. Come on up. If you just make sure that button is pushed and the light is eliminated, please.
Testing, testing. Good evening. My name's Colette Lane and I just want to bring something to your attention. You may or may not be aware of that. I know that you mentioned the Texas Open Meetings Act at the beginning of this meeting. When I look online at the agenda for this evening, under Audience Participation, and I'm just going to kind of paraphrase, it says, "Policy local states, the audience participation at board meetings is limited to the public comment portion of the meeting designated for that purpose. At all other times during a board meeting, the audience shall not enter into discussion or debate on matters being considered by the board." And that, for your information, seems to be in violation of the Texas Open Meetings Act. Texas Local Government Code 551.007B talks about public testimony, which that's something else I need to say. Are we an audience or are we members of the public? But I do, if you'll just bear with me for a moment, Chinese text. Okay, 551.007B says, "A governmental body shall allow each member of the public who desires to address the body regarding an item on an agenda for an open meeting of the body to address the body regarding the item at the meeting before or during the body's consideration of an item." So I think it's very important for there to be dialogue with the public. And just to be clear, the 551.0013E talks about governmental body means a school district, board of trustees. 551.0014A talks about a meeting, meeting deliberation where we have an exchange. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Lane. Next will be Mr. Raul Flores.
Good evening, Raul Flores. With the group called the Kamal Primary Guardians. I've been watching the agendas. I'm not sure if, when this made them up, so I'm just going to bring it up now. Early February of this year, the appraisal district that were, then the Kamal School District in terms of the tax appraisals, market values, was found to be out of confidence with the comptroller's office. This was in 2021. Apparently, Mr. Anderson from the school district here alerted, or not alerted, but discussed this issue with the then-chief appraiser, who has since been fired, Hector Lozano, discussed this issue in the minutes from that particular board meeting on February the fourteenth, the appraisal district board meeting. Mr. Anderson is present and there's a discussion between the chief appraiser and Mr. Anderson about the property values going forward. Very concerned that the values were not going to be in confidence. And again, these are all in the board meeting, that is what the appraisal district. I do know two months later, actually a month and a half later, Mr. Lozano was fired just as the appraisal letters were going out. I do know everybody sitting in this room and many people that were here earlier saw some of the highest appraised value increase in history. And I feel like this is something that needs to be tied off at some point for the public. Just to make it known, I also learned at a follow-up appraisal district meeting that the school district was going to be entering into an appeal with the comptroller's office to appeal the decision, the out-of-confidence decision from 2021. At some point, I'd like that to be brought forth in an agenda so that can be discussed so that the public is aware of that particular situation. I also would like the public to be aware that as a result of these higher appraisals and as a result of about a one penny reduction in the property tax rate, this school district will be sending via recapture $25 million worth of property taxes collected or to be collected by this appraisal district and it's going back to the state. I just think that's important to note. It's part of the Robinhood scheme. About 130 school districts pay into it and about 1,000 take out of it. Kamal School District just wants that piece into it. And a lot of that has to do with property value study. That's why it's so important to not let this go. I think it needs to be its own agenda item where there can be discussion because as you all know, this is a very, very complex issue. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, next is President's Comments. Just real quick, I definitely do want to take an opportunity to, for us as a board, to acknowledge and thank everybody that was involved in the complications leading up to Friday was the last one. A week ago, Friday was the first, and six days, six days later, the final one was concluded at Canyon Lake High School. And I've heard nothing but great things. I've heard, everybody just thought the complication was just really over the top. So again, we have the entire board. We all want to just thank everybody that was involved in complications, whether you played a little bit part or a big part. Every part was great because the response had been wonderful. So I appreciate everybody letting the humor take place with going back through the decades and the history of Kamal ISD and showing some pictures of some leaders of our district that were maybe not too fond of the pictures their mom sent or their spouse sent, but it was all a great fun. We really, truly appreciate it. It was a great time for all. Tomorrow is the first day of school. Definitely like this Bissadi's prayer. We hope that everybody does have a wonderful first day safely to school and to home tomorrow evening. We're going to start the year off with flash flood warnings and stuff just so we'll know that we need to be prepared for anything that comes to us this school year. Why not? And then trust me, really, the agenda, I know everybody had an opportunity to go through the workbook. We've got a pretty good, robust agenda, but it is also one that I feel that we can manhandle pretty well here and get into close session. So without further ado, we will begin with Souvenir Reports and Board Information, Prepare Classrooms and Facilities for Learning, TASB update 119. This will be for the second reading. It's the second reading. Mr. Armando Miasse.
Good evening, Mr. President. Board members, Mr. Kim. So we have here update 119. This is the second reading. And this is an update that covers recommended local policy revisions to added laws from the eighty-seventh legislature regular session first and second public sessions. Other revisions included are a response to the administrative code. There are no district-initiated changes to the subject 119. And you'll see the list there of the policies that involve the local policy changes to office management, records management, professional development, required staff development, basic instructional program, required instructional at all levels, curriculum design, special programs, special education identification, evaluation, eligibility, and special programs gifted in talented students, academic achievement, graduation, board policy AIF. FFBA, which covers crisis intervention, FFH, which is dealing with harassment, discrimination, retaliation. There was a question last time about the cost associated, reaching out to TASB and he came back. He said, "It's all depending on the local district in terms of what the cost is associated." They don't generate any cost per se with these policies, but we have reached back out to them to provide any other specifics. So they pointed out certain policies like the FFBA, crisis intervention, required trauma-in-year reform training. That would obviously vary from district to district. That's just as one example. So it's very district-specific, but if you have any other questions, you can have to follow up with him. This is the second reading that will be presented. It's duly called board meeting as the third reading and for possible improvement. Do this presentation. I turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Miasse. Very good. We will look forward to having the third panel update before we take action. Thank you, Mr. Miasse. Next is Active Client procurement. This is Catherine Young.
Good evening, Mr. Flores. I'm definitely on the board. I will turn your attention to page eighteen, part of the business matter. First one I have is RIQ twenty-three dash zero five for wireless access point replacements. This is a project within the twenty-one bond of the technology department. They are going to replace one hundred and sixty-five each of access points that have reached their end of life. Most of these are only be found in cafeterias and gymnasiums. And the new access points will provide greater coverage and capacity. Next item is RIQ twenty-three dash zero six. Ms. Harmish, I took a little bit of liberty in calling this Light Bridges West. That is never official name by any sort, but we were just trying to identify it from this project. If you remember back in 2018, when we're going to build the sale of the raw primary campus to help innovation sciences, we're staying in the first quarter of this year. They are upgraded at the facility and we, as part of our agreement, are going to be leasing it back again on August first, 2023. We wanted to get this in front of you as the biggest piece is the technology department needs to be able to get the networking equipment on order as we discuss the support, the long impacts that we're seeing with some of those things. But in addition to the technology equipment, at some point, we'll be bringing furniture fixtures and equipment in any of the regular rooms. If you can see that. So if there are any questions about that, I'll be answering.
Thank you. Mrs. Yalden. Mr. Nancy.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Yalden, can you, I want to refer to CSP twenty-two dash fifty-five. Regarding library finishes, I do remember passing that, talking about that. Polish concrete was my concern at the time and I'm looking for some sort of sound dampening or sound mitigation. I'm just curious, are these sire tiles, is that, is that our?
So what we had done when we did Smithson Valley High School and, what's the other one right now? Smithson Valley High School, I don't have it in mind, but we put down carpet squares in certain areas to help with some of the sound within the library. So as far as I know, they're going forward with this would be projects that we could do next summer. So we need to have some more discussion about that. Obviously, we have to have the campuses cleared to be able to do all of that. So we'll definitely circle back and make sure that we've got a good answer for you as well as the rest of our ownership.
Thank you, Nancy. Mrs. Ross.
Thank you, Mr. President. When was the last time we had a meeting of them? Are they on schedule? I know they were behind on that building.
Well, as, Burden is hurt, she's probably not really happy with that, but I'm, I didn't invite her. We have actually, I think, very recently, and we'll actually talk about that a little bit in closed session.
Correct. Thank you.
Mrs. Ross, Mr. Martin.
Hey, Mr. President. So with respect to the Light Bridges, so that, the fact we are intending to lease it back, that was part of the 2018 agreement. And we're releasing back a portion of it, so we're.
No, you're good. I'll start. So yes, so they bought the old raw primary and they are revamping that part. The Light Bridges West part will actually be an additional separate building from that, but it will tie in. It's, I have this square footage. I think it's eighty-seven-ish.
And then there'll be opportunities for those kids in the other portions of them.
Correct, correct. But it is, it really is going to be a self-contained piece that they're building for us first. They have met and they are getting ready. They have a contractor on board. They're, they're getting ready to start that construction and we're looking for July once, the stage of completion for us to be able to be in there and ready to go for August.
How many kids can that support? Or you have it all still?
Jeff, do you remember? I'll have to go back and look at my notes on how many kids. I know I have that over there, but I'm sorry about that.
Okay.
Lots of things, a lot of things here today.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Okay, next will be, Mr. Yalden, begin with district vehicle purchases.
Okay, thank you. If you remember, we can come to the board, well, I actually came to the board twice, if you remember correctly, on this one, for this R twenty-two dash ten, where we approved Cavan and Grand Day Board as an additional option for our usual co-op members. Because of the situation with the vehicles, we've not been able to find them all. And it actually has been great for us, but when they tell us they have one, we have jumped on them. So these are two maintenance and operations vehicles that we bought. They're both service body vehicles. So the invoice price from Cavan and Grand Day was about forty-two eight per vehicle. Our agreement is to pay three percent over their invoice and then we had ten point five thousand dollars add-on for the service body. So, but with these two trucks, just to speak up, you'll hold your peace, is we are pretty caught up on our vehicle needs for this year. And so like I said, this is going to help. We've had to bring some boards on in addition to our Dodge trucks, which makes something a little more difficult on the transportation department, but at least we have the vehicles in place to meet our needs.
Thank you, Mr. Yalden. You can move me right on. Next will be bond twenty-twenty-one project updates. This is Chris Martin.
Good evening, Mr. President, board of trustees, Ms. Epley. The last time we gave you a bond twenty-one update was actually March thirty-first. And I know we've had multiple conversations, at least non-publicly since then, but just wanted to come back with kind of an official update of what work was accomplished this summer and where we are on our new school buildings and projects going forward. So we'll start out just with our new facilities. So here is a relatively current picture of Elementary School Twenty. They send us weekly picture updates. And as you can see, they are well underway with pouring foundation and they are moved on to the second floor on the foundation piece and are working on the utility and infrastructure needs out there on both Elementary Nineteen and Twenty. This is our timeline and we're still looking at a construction complete date in June of twenty-three so that we are ready to go for next fall. Middle School Eight, we are moving right along. And we have been working diligently with the city of Walberti on permitting so that we can get started out there. But in the meantime, the construction manager, Ruth, which is Ms. Ganska, I think they're with us tonight, has been working with our, with Luger, the architects, to get the design down to where we need it. City of Walberti on the permitting and we are in the process hopefully of having those final permitting documents so that we can get started actually clearing and moving dirt here September first. And then we're looking at a June of twenty-four completion date for Middle School Eight. We do have bid package three that's coming to you all tonight for approval. And that is kind of where we stand with Middle School Eight right now. Hill Country, and this is just a picture of the first floor of the schematic design. As the design committee has met back on August eleventh to kind of review another round of the schematic. We, we are looking, with this one, we're still in that design phase and we are looking at construction beginning in March with the completion date of June of twenty-four. So we still are in that design phase and taking feedback. I did want to give an update. I know one of the items that were talked about heavily were the ingress, egress in and out of the campus. And we have worked with Tech Dot and the city of Walberti to adjust the drive length so that it will have a longer ingress, egress in and out. And then they've gone from a hundred parking spaces to two hundred to accommodate additional appearance and events that will happen at that campus. And then with that, I did want, because this is really the piece that I think everyone's been concerned about, just to give a finance update. As you know, when we passed the bond, we were not anticipating high levels of escalation and just the economic conditions that construction in general and really the entire economy has been facing over the last several months. So we passed bonds in November and the budget of those projects are listed there in that first column. The updated costs, which you'll see in your financial reports for Elementary Nineteen and Twenty, are estimated at right around forty-six million dollars. Those do include all of the other contingencies. So there is one and a half to two million dollars probably in contingencies in projects. We are still, still working through the processes as we go and if there are cost savings along the way, we'll realize that. Middle School Eight, we are only on bid package three, which you see tonight. So the eighty million dollars you see there is part of bid package three. So as we are adding in the costs that are coming in, that is our estimated project cost as of today. And so you can also see that. The, the other project is your Hill Country project. We are still looking, we're looking at sixty thousand square feet for that campus. And because of the, the process and just not knowing where the site is going to be, we are still feeling we can offer the sixty thousand square feet and still come in at around a thirty thousand, thirty million dollar budget, which will have a little bit of cost savings that can be reallocated out to the projects that are over. In the past, we've also talked about interest on this bond. We're already, we've already taken in about two point five million in interest and we expect that will jump to around eleven million over the, over the course of the bond. So we, we are setting that aside specifically to cover the cost of projects. We also have additional project savings that will come in on some projects. The high escalation has really been on our large product, projects, not as much so on some of our smaller ones. And some of that is just the petroleum cost and any petroleum projects and products associated with construction are really where we're seeing that high escalation. In addition to that, we have, we do, we may at some point along the way, far down the line, have to supplement with fund balance or a future asset sale or something else that we're going to supplement to get us, to make us whole. But I really do think we're going to be very close, even though that number looks big, to netting even when these projects are all said and done. Also, to keep in mind, we have some projects in here that pass that we can't actually begin working on because, because the athletic portions did not pass. And so some of that is being used to supplement and that's where we'll backfill those projects hopefully with interest and project savings at the end of the projects. That way we can keep moving forward with the schools, stay on schedule and get these opened as planned. But with that, I'm sure we have questions, so I'm going to pause there and just take questions on any of the new construction as far as our facilities.
Thank you, Ms. Harmish. First, these evening on the construction. Mrs. Ross.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick question about the parkage at Hill Country. Because I know that when we were at the meeting, didn't we say we had two hundred? But we're going to add more than that.
We were going to allow for an alternate for more than that. Currently at Max, we have just over a hundred. So basically, we're going to have to double at the.
So you didn't add any more from the.
It could be as an alternate that the contractor will price for us and then we'll be able to decide if we want to move forward with it or not. And again, we're still in schematic design.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Ross. In, Mr. Schmidt, do you want to come up to our phone?
Because they, it was an additional one hundred right now is the alternate. The original was, I was two hundred, right?
When we first started out, we were going to be much smaller than that. And as we've gone through the process, we've gone ahead and put two hundred into the project and then we're going to have another twenty-five to fifty that will prices all in. Right. And so that way, again, we're just in schematic design. We're nowhere near a hard time. So we're just still trying to work through the budget and see what we can afford within our supply. But we're also trying to figure out exactly what we need for that campus because it's not like the normal campus at all. So again, we have, we have virtually doubled plan right now compared to what we have to face.
The concern was, is that when you talk about like the max, because I think you said they had a hundred and thirty spaces, but there is overflow going into, and at this one, they're not going to have the overflow. So I think that was the, the main concern. But I know that we talked about the drive and everything, adding some stuff there. We talked about adding to the back of that campus and another one on the side. So I'm hoping to see that in the design.
Yes, we'll, we'll be looking at that in the future absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Thank you, Mrs. Ross. Mr. Rosinski.
Mr. President, so if we're still in a bit of a state of unknown around the last project, right, when schematic design, I think was mentioned, that sixty million dollars isn't really, really realized, correct?
No, it, I mean, it's not, but we're still looking at the price per square footage. Unless we add a lot of square footage to this, to this campus, it's within range. So I think we're looking at twenty-nine million in construction right now. And we still have the design that is covered in bond twenty-seventeen.
And I guess my, my only concern is the bond budget that we have here, the updated cost that we have there, I just don't want to be in a position where we aren't correct because that's a big number that we're saving, right? How confident are we that that's the number?
Part of what we're doing, keep in mind, we're doing this as a senior project. So we already have our contractor engaged. They're the one providing us with the budget numbers. So those are current, with current pricing through the start of March, construction of what the numbers will be at that time when we actually start the charges. So we're not, we're not as a construction planning to, yes, if we have to contract.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosinski. Mrs. Bissadi.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have a question about Middle School Number Eight. Can you remind me what schools that relates with its building?
It will really Johnson, it'll be, really Smithson Valley Middle for pulling some Johnson Ranch elementary students as well as Piper Ranch Middle because it will hold Indian Springs. And then, I don't think I, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mrs. Bissadi. Mr. Martin.
Mr. President, so, I appreciate the presentation. My, I have, you know, obviously with the difference, the big numbers up there, the big red. So my concern is that if, if we don't continue to see the prices come down for the home structures in the middle, that now we're going to potentially have to really gouge Hill Country and not end up with a facility that meets our, meets our needs because we are so desperate to make ends meet. So.
I'll, I'll be honest, that is actually not what we're doing at all. We're designing Hill Country not with the cost savings. It just happens that we're seeing some cost savings that we can use. The other option is to, as I said before, we can use fund balance to, to fill in the gaps. But that's, so, and that is what we would plan to do anyway. So if we don't see the savings here, if we don't see it in other projects as we go, then, then we'll make those concessions. But I think between the interest, the project savings and just the last several bond packages that I've worked on, you do find project savings and scope changes throughout that, that do allow for, for that. And the interest funds are fairly conservative if we delay some projects or we can't build some things right now to keep improving those interests down the line so that we'll be able to fully see a little bit more in that area as well.
Yeah, I just, obviously, when you start talking fund balance piece, that announcement, we really start getting pressure on the budget, which then impacts our ability to use the batteries. So, yeah. But I appreciate the pressure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Mrs. Jones, you said you had a question to answer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Harmish, I appreciate the updates. Obviously, there's red on here and kind of going through the numbers, even with the interest, I was kind of deducing it from the main total. Looking at all of that, how confident are we in these updated costs? Because I know, you know, you look at that right there, that's, you know, thirty-seven million. How confident that these are the updated costs from your scope of understanding?
Pretty, I'm pretty confident. Nineteen and Twenty were full on CSP bid packages, so those are the construction costs for nineteen and Twenty. Those shouldn't deviate. They're re-contracted, we blocked those in. On Middle School Eight, we'll have one more additional and possibly two. I think they're looking at maybe a bid package for A and B option. To do that, and so there may be some slight shifting in, in those numbers, but they've already, that proposal went out on August fifteenth. And so they're already getting numbers back in and they look, they look good. So, or at least on, fairly on budget. And then like I said, with Hill Country, we still are in the design. And so until we really start doing construction costs, there is potential to have some fluctuation in, in those. But, but they are working with the contractors as we go to try. to try to get good pricing so that we can make decisions on, on what to do.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, cause I was just looking, you know, obviously the top two are, you know, underway, but the, the last two are still, you know, haven't broken ground yet. So that is really helpful. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Okay, continue with the existing campuses on bond a later.
And so we did want to give just a little bit of an update on our elementary playground. We, we did see some delays this summer and some of the materials needed for the drainage part of the playgrounds. There was some mesh and some other items that, that just did not come in. So it has delayed the, the completion. So we were planning on completion around the beginning of September for Clear Springs and Broad Heights. And then every campus was supposed to be about two weeks behind the first one. And we're, we're now looking at Clear Springs being completed September thirtieth, within Broad Heights October fifteenth, and then starting Goodwin Fraser here in the next couple of weeks with more of. And then there's about seventy-five days from the start to finish on those projects. And Oak Creek will be our next one of the original four and we'll head out there and get a timeline going. I would expect it to be, to start about two weeks after that, September sixth, now that materials are here and we're able to kind of get on that schedule. Um, we have worked with each of the principals so far that are without a playground. So Clear Springs and Broad Heights are currently without playground facilities. And so we have some large shade structures coming in in the next couple of days to go out on the field so that the teachers and staff that are out there are not just baking Amazon during recess time. And then Michaela Smith worked with some of our crew today to get, um, some additional PE equipment, volleyball nets, soccer goals, balls, things like that out there for them to have to play with in the fields and in us, in those spaces until the playgrounds are ready. Um, when we talked to Hillary at Goodwin Fraser, we were going to phase and leave one playground open and then move to the next playground. And she preferred that we just do it all at once and get in and out of there as quickly as possible. And so we'll, we'll do the same thing for her. And we already have those shade structures coming on the twenty-fifth and they'll, they'll also go out to Goodwin Fraser too. So they're prepared to, to adjust once construction can begin out there. And so far, I think the principals have been really, really amazing and working with us and working through the delay. Um, but if you hear anything else, let us know so that we can keep working to make sure we're serving, serving the kids and staff out there. Next, we did work on the Goodwin Fraser HVAC suite. It was a base four project this summer and that did get completed last, um, actually around August tenth. And they were able to relax the floors and clean it up and the teachers were able to move in last week before we meet the teacher. And so we, it was close, but we did get in and out of there with their HVAC going. Uh, they are having some issues currently with their existing HVAC units. And so they've been, they've been working on some portable AC and these were the units replaced just two or three years ago. So we are out there troubleshooting that one and hopefully we'll have a smooth go tomorrow and they will, um, at least have portable units at this time of the year. Um, we did also complete, um, working on repaving project at the Rebecca Creek Transportation Hub. And so this is just kind of a picture of that with buses parked on it. Um, there were, there were, they were parked on base and it was an issue when it was raining, an issue for drivers. And then there, there's some lighting out there too, so they're not walking, stumbling around in the dark. So, so this was a nice improvement for our transportation folks. Um, we did complete, um, base three of the campus refresh project at SPECT and they were, they were done that first week of August and everything was cleaned up. Um, it did include, um, cabinets being installed into the classrooms even though we had, we had removed them from prior. Um, it did have some bathroom refreshes. You see the polished concrete in the cafeteria and all the classrooms and it had wings coating. Um, was replaced on the sides to match the original work that was done during the winter store. They are good to go at SPECT. And then we were able to get the gym floors replaced at Rebecca Creek and Bill Brown this summer. And we did want to highlight at Bill Brown, we also did the lighting. So the first, the, the picture on the, um, right, I guess, where it looks yellow was before the lighting changes. And then you see the nice floor and the nice lighting in the other picture. So we just wanted to kind of, but those projects are completed and they've been completed since the beginning of August, so they're ready to go. Um, the parking lots that we were all very concerned about, Canyon Middle School Parking. Um, the lack of rain this summer did not cause delays in these projects. So Canyon Middle School project was straight to complete. Sixth graders were able to use the parking lot today for orientation and, and they're ready to go for the first day of school. Smithson Valley had a smaller parking lot as you're looking at the stadium. It was off kind of by the tennis courts and then the walk path. And so that project was poured last Thursday and set and they will, they are, there's a clear walk path for everyone to use for the next week and then they will open it up to traffic, through traffic for following weeks. So we're closing it off for one week to through, through traffic. Uh, but it will be open after that and then they'll come back in a couple of weeks and do the strike date and ceiling there. So that one will be, will be done here relatively soon as well. And then our, some of our safety and security projects, these are just a few pictures of the Bill Brown vest wheel project that was completed. They did get on the right, you can see the teller window that was put in. So that's in the inside of that vest wheel. So they can check parents in before they are able to enter the rest of the building. There are some additional access control points on doors inside of the front office that will be made so that you can't go in and cut through the nurse or get, and get into the campus a little more easily. So we're going to make those, some other checkpoints in there to make it just a little harder to gain access to the whole building. And then some of our safety and security projects, I did not realize these were on the thing. So we have been working really since last spring on fencing projects and all but three campuses were completed as of today. Um, Royal Verde, Kinder Ranch and Garden Ridge are still pending. Um, and then there will be some additional work for gates once the playgrounds are done. So there are some areas that we, we have to go back to, um, when playgrounds are complete. Um, tenting and hardening is, uh, purchasing is ready to bid out. All of the, the design drawings have come back for that project. Um, lighting and the fire funerals are also in design and we'll, we'll be bringing those back to you soon. Buses, we ordered the first round of thirty buses in November and we were expecting those to come in this summer. And we're now looking for a, a, in September delivery on the first thirty. And then we ordered the second round in March and we are expecting those probably closer to February. So we have seen a few delays in getting the, the buses in. But I believe Jessica has announced a couple of times that everybody is in an air-conditioned bus, at least two in from school and athletics, but even have air-conditioned bus. The Buffalo, yes. Okay, so there we go. So everybody was a little happier at least with that. And then on technology, they had four different projects that they were working on this summer. One were the student devices and cards. And as of today, they were delivering the last three cards to the elementaries. So if you recall, we went from just doing secondary to doing secondary and elementary to accommodate testing. And they managed to get all of that out before school starts. So, so the campuses had those earlier than we expected. Um, and, sorry, camp, the campus network refresh as well as the servers are waiting on some equipment. So a lot of the, some of that equipment is being anticipated more in December. So once the equipment comes in, we'll continue those projects. And then they had a fiber optic cabling project that was completed this summer as well. And with that, I would take any questions on any, anything bond twenty wants?
Thank you, Ms. Hirsch. Mr. Krasinski?
Mr. President, um, so I just, the one thing I want to point out here is with this slide that you have, it's like the technology is kind of the campus network refresh and kind of the why behind it. I, I think for the public's knowledge, what are we utilizing for these campus network refreshes? What's actually being used? How are we using that?
Um, I may defer to Travis, but for the most part, the campus network refreshes are going to give us more bandwidth and capacity so that when we have all of the new devices online for testing, then it's going to, it's going to allow us to have that bandwidth to, to run those devices.
And we're moving all of our testing to on, online this year, perhaps, so we need that.
Yes, our TEA testing is moved to online, that's correct.
And then there's, there's stuff that we don't see necessarily. And I, I was answering, I'm going to answer my own question, but, uh, you know, there's security cameras, there's, there's a number of access, there's a number of things that we need this network refresh for. Um, that's IP use of phones and traps and probably answer that.
I want to round.
Um, I just want, I want to point it out because I think it's, it's critically important. And these things are part of the bond packages, they're expensive, but there's a lot of reasons why we need these things. I'll let you go there.
Um, yes, the, the campus network refresh includes, uh, just the campus network refresh. So it's only the, the campus. Um, some of the things that you're referring to regarding the security aspect, things are to be, uh, the second phase of this, which would be lead ads and refresh. A little more of the cybersecurity aspect of it. Focusing on the campus network refresh, which is important advice is ultimately classroom support, testing, extension. But, um, yes, there's support, uh, an upcoming project for, for refresh of the security cameras, uh, just security camera servers, uh, that will be in place right now. Um, and, uh, telephones, telephones will be refreshed later on. So all of this works together. This will be phased, everything is put into proper computation so that we can scale the growth things appropriately. So.
Please.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Hennessy?
Thank you, Mr. President. Small question regarding buses. Um, I remember in previous bond, we also purchased buses just due to life cycle, uh, needs. Will these thirty and plus thirty that were on order, total of sixty on order, if I'm doing math right, will that put us up to the refresh of our life cycle or should we expect more buses?
We still have one more round in this current bond to do. And so if you were, I think because we had to delay bond twenty twenty, we were just way behind. And so we've been doing the refreshes pretty quickly. We're trying to spread them so that they're, they're not all ninety going to be due again at the same time, at the same, but we are still catching up. So, so we'll, we'll see the next thirty here pretty soon.
I must say, you know, Mr. President, when I drive around the district, I do see a lot of new shiny Comalt ISB buses with air conditioning and they look fantastic. Um, some of those old dogs that are out in the back there certainly did need to be replaced, uh, for a multitude of reasons. And I'm thankful that we do have those brand new buses for our kids.
More drivers.
Yes. Yes, we do need more drivers to drive our fancy air-conditioned buses. Um, I would also just, Mr. President, more of a comment, um, you know, as all of us have this summer involved in hitting our campuses and getting to talk with people and see these things as they're being, uh, worked on. And, and, uh, the final outcome of these projects is nothing short of fantastic. It really has made our schools look, uh, totally prepared for the school opening tomorrow. Uh, I just wanted to point out, I'm thankful to all of you that have worked on that. And I know that there have been supply chain issues throughout and there have been some hiccups. Uh, y'all have responded very well to that. Um, and also the resiliency of some of those campuses that are affected. I'd like to point out those principals at Goodwin Fraser and at Clear Spring Elementary that quickly came up with a plan, uh, in, in conversation with you guys here. Uh, they're going to be A okay. So I thank you for that and look forward to the completion of those projects as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Hennessy. Ms. Ross?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick question on, um, the redevelopment of Smithson Middle School. It says that the, it's under the review of contract. I thought we were supposed to complete that this summer. What is the estimated date on that?
We approved, we approved that at the last board meeting, the contractor and the contract itself is under review. So we're just reviewing and getting all the attorney signature, getting through the signature piece of that contract. But that should be, they should be forthcoming and be able to, to issue a notice to proceed later this week.
And we can do that while the kids are at school, is that correct? With this, with this roof? Okay, so it is planning on getting done for the, for the winter time? Cause I know that they are literally buying boxes of ceiling tiles every time it rains and it's buckets out, so.
It, it's a multi-month project, probably close to eight, eight months if it is a large roof, the standing seams for rational.
Okay. Have we gotten with them to see what they need as far as ceiling tiles? Cause I think they're using school budget for that and they should be. And, yeah, cause I mean literally ceiling tiles over time it rains, boxes of them. You might want to get with them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Ms. Beasanti?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I kind of went off of what Mr. Hennessy said. I'm super impressed of all the projects that have been completed. I think it's fabulous. Um, you guys have been working extremely hard. Um, I love the communication with the principals, keep them informed. Um, and as you know, um, that's very important, but those of us up here are the ones that are going to hear from the parents. And, um, my concern is really just about the playgrounds. Um, I understand that we're doing the best that we can and, um, as fast as we can. And, um, sounds like you guys have a plan B in place for the start of school, which is great. Um, short of safety issues, is there any way that, or maybe we should just chat about this, should we postpone the rest of the, um, playground improvements as long as, as long as safety issue until the kiddos aren't there?
Um, I think the issue that we would run into with that is that we wouldn't be doing playgrounds for like five years. Because as we're seeing this delay and, and I know tonight you have an action item to, to approve a construction manager at risk for the playgrounds. And once we get them on board, we'd really like to just rock and roll as long as the school, the campus itself has space. So if there is a field that we can accommodate and bring out the extra equipment and the shade and try to keep them going, we would rather keep moving with them. But there may be some campuses that we have that just don't have the space for that and they would have to be a summer project. Um, but the timeline is at least seventy-five days from start to finish. And even our summers start to get pretty short. And if we had to try to do fifteen or sixteen or twel- even twelve of these in the summer, it would be very hard.
And I think that what you just said, as long as there's space, I think that's acceptable. Um, but those kiddos have to have a place to play, right? So if the school doesn't have space, then maybe those schools get bumped to a summer project.
And we've worked with them too on some basing. Like I said, we gave, we've been giving Goodwin Fraser and we gave Oak Creek the same option to do one of the two playgrounds at a time so that they would have access to one of them. Um, and some, so to some extent, we're leaving a little bit to the campus and principal discretion just because they know their kids and their space and what they need. Um, but trying to also at the same time get them done so that, so that we can, we're not delaying. Otherwise we could be doing this for several summers to go.
Sure. I appreciate that.
And, and they want them, their parents want them now. So that's the unfortunate piece is that any of them that aren't in this summer, they're already like, why didn't we get ours?
Oh, yeah, I know. So it's either, so it's either now or, um-
So there's going to be some uncomfortableness of being without in order to get the new thing.
Sure.
And so it's just the timing of when we want that to happen.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I do want to also echo what Mr. Hennessy and Ms. Beasanti said there too, but, um, overall, great job. I know when we were talking about potentially postponing the parking lots, especially at, uh, middle school and high school. Uh, there were some angst amongst us and some of y'all out there as well. Um, but to get that job done, uh, y'all deserve kudos there. And the contractors should hear it as well from, from those of us that were questioning, can we do it? Uh, so again, great job to you guys for doing that. Okay?
All right, uh, you're not going anywhere. Where are you?
Maybe, I just want to do Mr. Chambers. You see you doing our bond updates. What, Mr. Chambers is like, no, 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 I got this. So yes, next on the agenda is bond twenty twenty-three. Mr. T. Stanford?
Yes, sir, Mr. President, board members, especially as I'm the second act, uh, looking forward, uh, to the next bond. And, uh, just want to kind of give you a brief update of kind of where we are in the planning process. Uh, we talked to you last time about the multiple board. Uh, we are in the process of, um, bringing that community together. Uh, we have just around fifty names, just shy of fifty, I believe. And so we're going to start putting out invitations here pretty quickly. Uh, we know not everybody who's been nominated will be able to participate. It is a rather, uh, large commitment for this fall, as you can see. Um, we have a schedule there. I do want to point out that we do, and I apologize, I think it was in your demo, that I added two January meetings. And I apologize, I didn't get it on the slide. So, but I did, uh, get your feedback, Chris Ross, you can add those additional two meetings. So we're looking at nine meetings, uh, between now and January, the next six months. And that, well, um, Mr. Hirsch and myself are going to be getting together here and, and talking about what those meetings will look like. You know, because we're going to have so many new members, um, on our committee that have not participated in the past, uh, we're going to have to kind of start at ground zero. I talked a lot about, you know, finance one-on-one, how sort of finance works. All those things and a lot of stuff about the graphics, a lot of people, kids and simpleton come in. Uh, we are planning on, um, going to the next, uh, board meeting and give us a little- We are planning on having, having to come to next month's board meeting and give us a different graphic update. And so, you know, we'll start with that foundation, and then we'll go through the process of, you know, just going through and working out the, from that bond package. I do want to talk to you a little bit about tonight, just I shared with you, with your memo. So I think it's good to just kind of have some context of where we are, we've been working on this while, while. And just real briefly, just again, kind of our process. You know, we started this several months ago with our campus administrator getting the needs list from them. And then that comes up here to the district level. We're looking, we're also looking at court orders, and we're looking at demographics, and we're looking at our assets, and just kind of get a real scope of where we are with all the projects that we could possibly go into. And of course, we continue looking back with our campus administration. Other factors that go into it as we make these decisions, and they'll be a very important thing for you as a board to think about. And as well as our comout board committee is just looking at what's our bonding capacity, what is it we can afford with our current tax rate. We also talk about the climate, you know, what's the appetite of our holders out there for a bond package? Certainly, we heard from the voters back in November.